All right. Good evening. This is Vice Chair Justin Cooley, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
All right. Commissioner Houghton.
I'm here.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Here.
Commissioner Khan will be absent. Commissioner Tully.
Here.
Chair Munoz Morris will be absent. Vice Chair Cooley.
This takes us to public comment for items not on the agenda at this time. We will hear any public comments for items not on the agenda. Items raised are generally referred to staff, and if action by the commission is necessary, may be scheduled for a future meeting. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, Chair, we do not.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda, and that means consideration of minutes of the February 14, 2024 Planning Commission. Before I call for a vote, do any commissioners have any comments on consent? Do I have a motion and a second to approve consent?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. All right, that passes consent. That takes us to our public hearing. Any court challenge to the action taken on public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to considering only those issues raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo at or prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. So our public hearing, the item before us is consideration of the 2023 General Plan Annual Report. Would Acting Housing Coordinator Owen Good please present the report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Cooley and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Owen Good, and the item I am presenting to you today is the consideration of the 2023 General Plan Annual Report. Staff recommends for the Planning Commission to receive and file the 2023 General Plan Annual Report with final acceptance by the City Council. The purpose of the General Plan Annual Report is to comply with the City Land Use Element Policy 11.3 and California state law and to review implementation of general plan programs. Land Use Element 11.3 states that the city shall prepare an annual report on the status of the general plan during the first quarter of each calendar year. There are a total of eight elements in the city's general plan. This list gives an overview of the elements and when they were adopted. In 2023, the city adopted the Climate Adaptation and Safety Element Update. Throughout 2023, staff worked to improve customer service and process improvements, such as improving review timelines, tracking department key performance indicators, and approving the new Ask Slow online information platform. Feedback received both internally and externally have been the focus of 2023 to improve the user interface and the platform. Staff also continued to coordinate with partner agencies on projects throughout the city. The Regional Housing Action Team facilitated by the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments worked to review the Housing and Infrastructure Regional Framework. The Prado Bridge Replacement Project is anticipated to begin construction in 2025, and the Prado Interchange is anticipated to begin construction in 2027. Planning and building activity. A total of 231 planning applications were received in 2023, a 10% increase from 2022. This trend is in part due to a small increase in exception requests that require director review and a planning application. A total of 600 building permits were issued in 2023, including permits for a net total of 354 residential units. The increase in permitting was specifically connected to an increase in residential additions and alterations, as well as commercial additions and alterations. Permitting for both categories significantly increased by 71% for residential alterations and 58% for commercial alterations. The decrease in units being permitted would be due to the fact that many of the city's specific plans, such as the Orca Area Specific Plan and San Luis Ranch, are approaching buildout and nearing completion. This leads us into the city's regional housing needs allocation. The city's six-cycle housing element period began January 20, January 2019, and the housing element update for the sixth cycle was adopted by council November 2020 and certified by HCD in September 2021. The city's regional housing needs allocation for the sixth cycle is 3,354 housing units to plan for, as seen in Table 4 on page 12. For the 2023 calendar year, the city permitted 74 new housing units towards our quantified objectives. And when we say quantified objectives, it means that they were only counted towards categories that are remaining to be met, and so that's for the below, or sorry, that's for the moderate and below categories. There were 367 units issued, but 74 only counted towards the needs allocation. Now I'd like to discuss the pipeline projects for affordable housing. The city is well-positioned to add more below-market-rate affordable units towards our needs allocation in coming years, and they're currently at various stages of review. These units will be deed restricted for very low, low, and moderate income households. A total of 586 affordable units are projected to be developed in the city in the next few years. Much of this development is a result of implementation of the housing element through various programs and policies. Since adopting the housing element in November 2020, city staff has implemented several housing element programs in alignment with the Housing and Homelessness Major City Goals. Table 6 on pages 15 through 17 of the report displays a list and discussion on progress of housing element programs in 2023. The table shown on this slide here is an abbreviated version of that table.
I have just a process question. So we've got the presentation we're going through. You're leading us through. If we have questions or discussion items, should we do that along the way, or should we hold them all until your presentation is done? What would you prefer?
Well, I mean, the way the process usually goes is questions after the presentation, but if staff doesn't mind.
We can do it either way.
Okay.
We can make it more of a discussion, or we can go through the presentation and have the questions kind of come at the end.
Yeah, I kind of like the discussion way, because it, then we roll through, and I don't know. I had, I had like little questions, like above mark, above moderate, is that market rate, or is that also? So things like that's like a slide or two ago. So if it's okay with you guys, if you'd like to proceed on that way, or what do you think?
Sure. I was just making note of which pages I had questions about, but if you're okay with that, we can just ask as we go.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
Sure. Yeah, we'll try not to get bogged down in anything, too.
Would we like to go further back than this slide here, or?
That was my first question was, above moderate, that is still a category of affordable housing?
So above moderate is, it's not considered affordable housing. It's non-deed restricted. It is, it's an income level, I suppose, of housing that the, the income levels on the left you see there, those are all designated by HCD. And so when we're talking about moderate and below, you see that we have categories for deed restricted and non-deed restricted. So those specifically, the deed restricted, well, some non-deed restricted as well, count towards our allocation.
Okay, great. And so, and there's specific fractions of median income that these, that these different categories apply to, right?
That's correct, yes.
And when we have an allocation, is there, is it specified how many of those are supposed to be deed restricted or not?
No.
They don't say so.
No. So, so we have, there was a regional housing study session that had a NEXUS study, and so some of those non-deed restricted units that you see in there are tracked. That was approved by HCD. That allows us to count certain accessory dwelling units towards that need. But aside from that, really, the biggest count that we're looking at is deed restricted units.
Yeah.
And so the above moderate category, we don't deed restrict as above moderate. It just means it's market rate housing.
Okay, thanks. That answers the question.
While we're here, quick terminology question. I remember in the report reading that generally we're moving away from using the terminology affordable housing to below market rate, but here I'm seeing BMR, affordable housing. Is there legal significance or where we would use one and not the other?
No, it's really just a best practice that we're trying to shift to, to refer to below market rate. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will move on to the next slide, and then, yes, please feel free to ask questions along the way. And so I believe we were ready to go on to our homelessness solutions. Homelessness Solutions highlights for 2023 include the adoption of the city's first homelessness response strategic plan, and continue to monitor key, key performance indicators for the Community Action Team and Mobile Crisis Unit. The land use element policy related to residential growth states that the city's housing supply shall grow no faster than 1% per year on average. Unit types that are exempt from growth management regulations are below-market-rate dwelling units, new dwellings in the downtown core, and legally established accessory dwelling units. In 2023, 301 residential units were constructed in the city, subject to the Growth Management Ordinance. As of 2023, there are a total of 22,814 units in the city's housing stock, subject to that ordinance. This is below the 2023 threshold of 22,869 units estimated by the 2015 land use element. So that's, we're right on track there, just under the estimate that we had in 2015. Since 2015, the city has maintained an average annual growth rate of 0.98% per year, in compliance with the 1% maximum average annual growth rate. Yes.
That's really good. I mean, how did we get so close to that, to the goal? Is that kind of luck? Is it, was policy driving that? And if we get over 1%, does the count, does the counter shut its door, or what happens there?
That's, that's a great question. Sorry. It is, to be that close, you know, to have a target and to be that close at your target eight years later is very, very good. So we're, you know, it is impressive that we're right there with the target. Question about what happens when we exceed 1%. So there is policy options for the city council to consider, but I would say it's noted when, we've been tracking this since 2015, we've had some really, really low growth years. So I'm talking a quarter percent. And you, you know, you do that for a few years, and there's a lot of additional capacity that has now been taken up over the last few years. So what we're seeing is if we obviously continue on this trend line that we've seen the last few years, then we're going to eventually exceed that 1%. You know, it's a target, and so I kind of agree with what you're saying is that the policies are working and the housing's getting constructed. We do, we do see that, as Owen mentioned earlier, you know, some of our larger residential capacity specific plan and kind of build-out areas are, some of them are kind of reaching their, you know, end of capacity. But we do have others like Avala Ranch and potentially some work in Margarita area that we're working on to create some additional capacity. So I, I would say that we are, over the life cycle of our land use element, looking out to 2035, that we, we do believe at this point, given kind of where we think we'll be in, say, five to seven years, that we'll still be probably close to this number that we have today of being just under 1%. That's our current kind of estimate.
Nice.
Could I add a quick alternative view of that in a way? You can see from the footnote there that ADUs and restricted affordable units and new dwellings downtown don't count. And, and in fact, those have been real priority areas for us over the last, certainly, last six years I've been on the Planning Commission, and, and those are exactly where our priorities ought to be. So perhaps, in the long run, if we bump over this or slide over, climb over the hill, and we find we've done too many, the more important piece of all of this relative to why we have this in the first place is the population statistics. And so in some ways, if we somehow go way over the 57,000 we're kind of projected to that gradually, you know, the 1% per year, 10% over a decade, it still looks like we're holding to that pretty well, too. And we're building more affordable housing and more ADUs. So we're kind of changing the mix in some ways, and it's miraculous that it's right at the point right there. It's hard to know whether it's just dumb luck or the fact that we've changed our priorities relative to what we're trying to approve, and it doesn't, they're not included in there, I think.
I believe staff will want to make the point that it is not dumb luck.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't mean to say it in a, in a negative way, but by excluding these things that we're trying, that we're really pushing on, it makes it a little easier, I think.
I would call it good planning.
Oh, okay. I'll buy one of those.
Do we, just for our purposes, do we have a percentage growth that includes the things that are not counted in this growth rate, just out of curiosity?
I don't have that figure at this time. That may be something that we, we could calculate, but I don't have that number in this presentation.
Just one kind of factor that has a huge effect on the population estimates is obviously the people per household size, right? So what we've seen just kind of as a trend line is that the people, number of people per household has been going down. And, and so that has obviously a significant effect on when you're calculating it based on the number of units, what your actual population is over time. And so there may be, if we continue down that, down this path of fewer people per household, there, there will probably be some capacity that is, you know, won't be realized.
Good point.
I just kind of did the math on that, and if you take that 23402 number and take back out to 22814, the difference is about 600 units, and that's as a function of the, the growth that we've had of 2,000 units, that's like a third. So maybe it's 1.3% or something.
Thank you. So moving on to non-residential growth, in 2023, 41,363 square feet of net new non-residential floor area was added to the city. The annual growth rate for 2023 was 0.35%, and the five-year net growth rate was 2.35%, which continues to be consistent with land use policies. In 2023, staff continued implementing and developing several specific plans. Progress in the Margarita area included continued construction of the Tuscano subdivision. The largest properties in the Margarita area, the Damon Garcia properties, have yet to be developed and have an estimated residential capacity of 408 residential units. When combined with the 442 units completed or in the development process, that total comes close to an estimated capacity of 868 units for the entire Margarita area.
So a while ago, we saw a proposal for the Link development. Is this any part of that, or is that something totally different?
Yeah, it's a totally different application and area. It's just, would be just south of the Margarita area.
Okay, thanks.
Progress in the Orca area included continued construction of the Rigetti Ranch and Pratt property and completion of the Benifera Homes. In the airport area, many large projects are currently in various stages of the development review process. A recently completed development was the commercial building located at 862 Aero Vista, and the site plan you see here on the screen is for 650 tank farm mixed use, which is currently under building permit review.
So I recently was looking at the airport master plan and what's happening there, and they're moving a taxiway over, they're going to have to take some, some, some of that commercial property is going to have to go away. Do you guys coordinate with, with what's going on there?
Absolutely. That's why we're doing some updates or considering some updates in the Margarita area and the airport area for additional housing. Updated airport land use plan has kind of different safety zone areas now than previously, and some of those are less restrictive to housing, and so we're considering what that might look like for additional capacity in those areas.
Okay, yeah. Hoover's going to get relocated and the round, yeah, all that stuff. Okay, thanks.
Question just for that general area. So the 650 project, so that's the first one of the three that we approved a number of years ago on Tank Farm, kind of at the upper end toward Broad Street. Are those other projects still also alive and well? I know they tend to get sold off to different groups of investors and developers, and things get stalled, but I'm kind of hoping we get our improvements on Tank Farm or, and, and all of that. That's part of what's on my mind, that in terms of a good bicycle path and maybe a safer route. And some of that was dependent on funding for some of those things from these developments is part of it. I'm just hoping we still have a plan that's going to hold together. It seems like some of these are still quite a ways off.
I mean, we still have a plan.
Good plan.
So kind of looking, I guess, at properties, sites from west to east. So there's the 600 Tank Farm, which is the site that had the Santa Fe Tank Farm Roundabout.
The Roundabout.
And, and so that is still an active, you know, entitled project. This is the 650, which is the next property to the east, and then there's the corner, Northwest Corner, I believe is the title or the name of the project on the corner that included a senior living facility as well as some commercial. So all three are still active in different phases of review.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to Avala Ranch. Avala Ranch saw significant progress in development last year. Phases one through three for your single-family homes are under construction, while the multifamily component of Phase Three is under review for planning entitlement. Phase Four and Six are pending submittal, while the Phase Five single-family homes have been approved. The Firm Ranch specific plan area was annexed in November of last year. This specific plan is composed of a life plan community, a multifamily component, commercial component, and significant park and open space conservation. In San Luis Ranch, multiple projects are currently in process with a total of 654 residential units. Residential development in San Luis Ranch is currently under construction. Staff would like to provide a quick update on a downtown project as well, San Luis Square. San Luis Square is a mixed-use project that was approved in 2018 and includes multiple four-story buildings and pedestrian pathways that would house 36 hotel rooms, 63 residential units, 19,792 square feet of commercial space, an underground parking garage, and outdoor seating areas in a plaza. 581 Higera is currently under construction, and the remaining buildings are currently in plan check review.
Where is that project? It's on Higera and what?
Do you have the cross street?
Yeah, so this is the old Foster Free site. This is on, this would be, you know, the corner blocks would be like Marsh, Napoma.
That's got, I got it.
Marsh, Napoma, Higera.
Yeah, thanks.
What was there that, I mean, it looks like there was, with the excavation, it looked like there were pillars from something way before. I mean, it looks, looks really old when you're digging down, I guess, where they're going to put the two-story parking, but I'm just curious. Was something discovered there, or is this a movie set or something that, right out of Dune or something?
I haven't heard. I'm not aware of.
Well, just when you walk by, you can see there's a lot of old brick pillars of all sorts.
They have to look for archaeological artifacts anytime they do that, right?
Yeah, they do.
And I'm taking over by Monterey, where the parking garage is going in. They're probably finding something there. Anyway.
So the original project was approved just like it is with all these different facets, hotel, housing, and retail and everything like that. Big project. Thanks for that update.
Yep, thank you very much. Speaking of downtown, last year we had several municipal code updates, one of them being the Downtown Flexible Density Program. This program was specifically identified in the Sixth Cycle Housing Element and satisfies Program 2.15 and Policy 6.6. The main goals of the program are to help address the local housing demand by facilitating increased higher-density residential infill development in the downtown area, near employment centers, incentivizing smaller units, and diversifying the city's housing stock. Downtown Flexible Density Program is a pilot program with the intent of adding 500 residential units to the city's downtown core. The program is set to expire January 1, 2029, or until 500 qualifying units are entitled or permitted under the program, whichever occurs first. At this time, no permits or entitlements have been granted for any qualifying units under the program. However, some projects have expressed interest during pre-application review with consideration using this program. So this is a new program, which is why we're not really seeing any permitted units yet.
I thought maybe this was the program under which we approved the project at Monterey in California, the 106 units. Am I mistaken?
No, that one, this is only in the downtown core area. The area you're talking about was a 100% affordable housing project, so there was a density bonus involved and some other incentives offered to that project, but it was not a part of the flexible density.
Some kind of flexible density thing has come before us, hasn't it?
The ordinance did, but other than that, there hasn't been a project before you considering using that in their.
Okay.
Development.
I have a question. Is the downtown flexible density only, is it a land use category specific, or just everything within those bounds?
Everything within the boundary.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So another municipal code update was the Comprehensive Subdivision Regulations Update. In this update, we implement, staff implemented the Housing Element Policy 6.2 to update the subdivision regulations within three years of the housing element adoption. This update supports small lot subdivisions and flexible lot design subdivisions. It implements state legislation for Senate Bill Nine, and it adds standards to clarify general plan hillside development. The Clean Energy Program was adopted by City Council July 2022, which requires new buildings to be all-electric. This program became effective in 2023 and was in effect for four months and then paused. After that, for four months, and then paused. After that, the city implemented more stringent energy efficiency standards. Moving on to the city's water supply. In 2023, the city's available water supply included 10,140 acre-feet of water, which was consistent with the city's current water supply need. Sorry, 10,183, I misspoke there. Moving on to transportation and circulation. The 2022 paving project was completed in 2023. This project resealed 4.8 million square feet of roadway, installed 40 new accessible curb ramps, completed three new, and completed three new neighborhood greenway routes. Another project completed was the North Neighborhood Greenway, which was 1.7 miles, or is still under construction of 1.7 miles of bicycle and pedestrian routes, 43 new accessible curb ramps, 60 new street trees, and high-visibility crosswalks throughout the corridor. And you can see on the map there, the North Toro Neighborhood Greenway starts downtown and goes across past Foothill Boulevard.
I'm going to make a, pick a bone with this, and consider it a public comment. It's gotten, it's been half-done, or three-quarters done now, for months and months. And I talked to somebody, and I understand it has to do with the contractor and their staffing or something. But it's given people, this is my neighborhood, and it's given people an opportunity to go, oh, this thing sucks, because it's not clear how it works. There's cones, it's really confusing. I've seen cars driving into it. I'm a proponent of it. I want to see it done. So I hope we get it done and buffed it out ASAP with striping and full signage and everything, because right now, everybody's confused about it. So, end of sermon. Thank you.
Safety services. In 2023, the Fire Department and Police Department continued to take steps to protect city residents, reduce crime, and prepare for other potential dangers. The Fire Department continued to conduct critical safety inspections in the city in 2023, and the Police Department made progress in various training efforts and continues to promote neighborhood wellness and civility. Regarding conservation and open space, some highlights for last year include repairs to the Miosi Open Space and Poly Canyon Road caused by the winter storms we saw last year. Staff anticipates seeing additional trails in 2024. The city continues to support and partner with City Farm Slow to deliver sustainable agriculture. Last year, City Farm Slow received a $200,000 grant for site access improvements and enhancements along Profumo Creek.
The Poly Canyon Road, isn't that on Cal Poly property?
I believe it's the connection for the Miosi Open Space. So it's related to the agreement and the work that they do on it. That's the extent that I would know. Parks and Recreation highlights from 2023 include youth and adult sports programming. They saw high numbers of participation, with over 650 children enrolled in the YMCA Winter Basketball League, and over 2,400 rostered adults for the year-round softball leagues. North Broad Street Neighborhood broke ground, Neighborhood Park broke ground, and the Orca Area Parks, a three-park system, made great progress on the design and held a public workshop to collect community feedback in April of 2023. And that site plan you see on the right there would be the Orchid Area Park current design.
Those pickleball courts?
I don't have the specifics if they're pickleball or tennis ball.
Okay, I'll shut up.
So that concludes the General Plan Annual Report, which conforms with Land Use Element Policy 11.3 and state law. The General Plan Annual Report also provides you, the Planning Commission, with an opportunity to review implementation of general plan programs in 2023.
Thank you for the presentation. Kind of to be comprehensive, and thank you also for accommodating our questions and doing a good job getting back on track. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wouldn't mind making a comment or two, if I could, just overall.
Please.
I thought two things in the plan that were, that were well highlighted, and I think you did a great job writing everything up. And one of those was the flood damage, the work to repair the flood damage in the city, and then the extra efforts, I think, also in preventing future floods. There was just a heck of a lot of work done. And you could easily go back over a, well, I mean, the mission had to move several times because of flooding and water issues. I mean, it's, it's been a hell of a problem in this area. And I felt like really big steps were taken this last year to get us back on top of that. The other thing was, maybe in the same kind of vein, but community wildfire protection, I think, has really been pushed. And as a resident sort of near that, one of those areas, I feel like I'm really feeling a lot safer with all the work that's going on. So those were two areas that are in the plan, but I just wanted to say something about how important they are and how well they got done.
All right. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions that we have not already lobbed towards staff?
There was, on the clean energy section, we adopted this clean energy plan that is, it was requiring all-electric for new buildings. But that's in some kind of abeyance now, is that right? And that, was there a legal challenge to that or something? And so now it's more of a suggestion than a requirement?
Yes, so that's correct, which is what, so the legal challenge occurred in Berkeley, which is what spurred staff to pause hours, and then, and adapt and provide new efficiency standards in response to that.
Okay. And so we're focusing more on efficiency than fuel choosing right now?
I don't have the specifics.
Thank you, Commissioner Houghton. Yes, that's correct. And in lieu of enforcing the fuel-switching ordinance, we're focusing on more stringent energy efficiency standards.
So, okay. I could go down a rabbit hole on that, but I'll stop. I want to echo the Commissioner Jorgensen's comments. This is great. I mean, I, it's impossible to, like, completely read one of these things, 100, it's not impossible, but, but it's great. It does a great job of hitting the highlights and giving an overview of what's happening. Neighborhood wellness, and this is on this neighborhood officer program. So according to this, there's 13 distinct neighborhoods, each with dedicated patrol officers assigned to address neighborhood issues. I have no idea who my neighborhood officer is. Am I supposed to? Are they, do they, how am I supposed to interact with that? Or I haven't seen any sign of that. And so that's one question I have. And then right below on code enforcement, I know that's not an all-inclusive list, the bullet list there, but I've had some issues with light pollution. And I've spoken with city staff about enforcement of that, and it's slowly, something slowly seems to be happening. But I just want to emphasize that that's a real issue, and would like to see it addressed when necessary.
Thank you. Yes, I don't, I can't speak to the Police Department's program on the assigned officers. Yeah, I think that's a great question. And regarding the light pollution, the city does have an ordinance for night sky preservation and lights, and we enforce that through our comments on building permit review and, you know, concerns, if it's, something seems like it's a violation, we've been, and our code enforcement team has been really responsive through that Ask Slow app that I mentioned at the beginning, where they field those, those kinds of concerns.
Yeah, the issue I'm having is not with new construction. It's an existing building with floodlights that clearly violate the standard. So, but I won't get into that right now.
All right. Any other questions or comments for staff? I believe I know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comment items?
No, we do not.
All right. I know this is a receive and file, but procedurally, do we need to have a vote to receive this?
Yeah, I would entertain a vote.
All right. So then we'll need a motion to receive and file?
I'll make such a motion to receive and file the General Plan Annual Report.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Houghton?
Yes.
Commissioner Tully?
Yes.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cooley?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
All right. So now that we've concluded that item, would Deputy Community Development Director Tyler Corey please provide an update to us?
All right. Well, thanks, Chair members of the commission. We do not have any scheduled items, kind of looking out for the next several hearings. You know, that can change as projects come back in and are ready for review. We do have several large projects that staff is kind of initially reviewing, that will probably be before you, more like summer, fall. So there is a little bit of a lull right now in items coming before the commission. But as, as things do come up, and they usually do, we will alert each of that and schedule something for an upcoming meeting.
In reviewing the minutes from the last meeting, I know that there were a couple of requests for updates on items. It's escaping my memory which items we'd requested updates on. Are those still coming?
One of the updates, I believe, was from Commissioner Jorgensen, that we included the slide on the San Luis Square development. And I would have to look at the other item in the minutes. I'm not sure what that one was.
I have a question. Does the San Luis Square have a estimated completion date?
You know, it's going to be built in several phases. And so this is a development that could last several to, you know, many years, as, you know, financing and, you know, development occurs. So the first phase, I don't have a timeline on when that'll be completed, but this, this site could be under construction for a while.
I found the other request for an update, it was from me, on the Link, which I kind of mentioned today, so.
Sure. I actually had a chance to speak with the applicant on that, and they're still kind of working with the Water Board to kind of get some testing methods approved, to kind of confirm or not if there's any, you know, what the level of contamination might be on the site that's left over from kind of the Chevron use of the property. So we don't have a, we still have a project that's kind of in a holding status at this time.
Yeah, it's a tricky spot, because it involves all that polluted land and Tank Farm Road. And I empathize with this bicycles. I've ridden my bicycle down there, and it is dangerous. And so I look forward to the improvement of that area and the roundabouts, which I think will calm traffic down and so on. So, thanks for that.
All right. Anything further for staff before we wrap this up?
So is there a meeting in two weeks?
There's no meeting in two weeks. And at this time, I actually don't have any items for April either.
I think that's called spring break.
Okay. So let me just announce what I have listed here. The March 27 Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. And I do have a note here saying the next regularly scheduled meeting is April 10, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers at City Hall, 990 Palm Streets, San Luis Obispo. And with that, I believe we are adjourned.